Good evening. This is Luke Revan, Assistant Manager here at East Brandywine Township. I'm addressing you in my capacity as the online moderator for this regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and to protect the health and safety of township officials in our residents, the Board is conducting this meeting via webinar. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the township's YouTube channel. A footnote of this meeting was posted on the township's website consistent with Act 15 of 2020. The agenda for this meeting was also posted on the website at ebrandywine.org/AgendaCenter and is visible on your screen. Members of the public can hear us, but your own phones and computer microphones are muted, so we cannot hear you. To enable an organized meeting, we're using the following procedure. As with in-person meetings, I ask that all participants wait to be recognized by the chairman before speaking, and that all comments be directed to the chairman. To be recognized, you must first ask me my capacity as the online moderator to unmute your audio connection. You may request this at any time via the chat feature located on the left side of your screen. Each person recognized by the chairman should state their name and address before asking a question. I would like to note for the minutes that we are joined via phone by all members of the Board. George is joining us via phone connection. I'll now turn the meeting over to Chairman Webber.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors regular meeting, January 21st. Do we have any public comment on it?
I had a heads up on a few folks who wanted to comment, but I don't see any text messages from individuals present who would like to be unmuted. I would submit we wait just a second.
Okay. All right, can I just go move on to the minutes of the previous meetings, the Board of Supervisors? November 19th, 2020, and the minutes of November 7th, 2020. Last motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November 19th, 2020, and December 17th, 2020.
Were you at those meetings, George?
It'll say on the top of the thing, December 17th, I was not there. And I may have been in the hospital for the other one, so.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of those two meetings.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the Treasurer's Report and Authorization to Pay Bills.
Mr. Chairman, I presume everyone is reviewing the list of checks from the last meeting and is preparing to make a motion to approve those expenditures?
Yes. Kyle, George, have you guys reviewed them?
The checks?
Yes.
I don't have them.
Okay.
My question is for Luke. The checks I asked you to hold for Eastburn and Gray, are they approved already by Jason and George?
Yeah, so the standing policy is that the checks need two signatures. I think I'd have to do some more research and get back to you. I believe the answer is yes.
Okay, what about the ones, my concern is relating to most of these Eastburn and Gray invoices.
Okay, my memory.
December 17th to the January 20th, are those ones already signed off on?
No, they would be waiting signature in an accordion folder here in the township building.
Okay, so I would be inclined to tell you the same, to hold off. I'm looking at these numbers from Eastburn and Gray, and I'm getting very concerned that our township cannot financially eat this burden with these expenses. So I would say I'm okay with everything except for the Eastburn and Gray ones that I'm reading through right here. Everything else I'm fine with.
Okay, so you'd indicated in last, so the sequence of events last month was the Board voted to pay the bills listed on that report. And during signature gathering, I got two out of three Board Supervisors' signatures on those checks. I think what you're doing this time is the appropriate procedure. If you have an objection to a particular check in the report, you would say, you know, I make a motion to approve these expenditures with the exception of, and then reference the check numbers. So could you provide the check numbers with which you disagree?
Yeah, it's invoice 2000832, 200831, 200834. And those checks were written for, I believe you have it as 26760. And... I think it's important while we're discussing this, we have special counsel now who's working on one of our biggest clients, or not clients, but biggest cases. So the fact that these invoices are so high is really concerning me considering we have somebody else working on the legal end of things right now. So yeah, that's the invoice right there. And then 152, invoice 20, check 152, invoice 20833.
So if I may be so bold as to paraphrase the motion at this point, you're making a motion to pay the bills with the exception of check number 26760, check number 152, and check number 20833 that appears in the check register in your Treasurer's Report?
Correct.
Okay, I would submit for the other members of the Board. It would be appropriate to either second or to seek a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What did Mr. Sherbach say?
He seconded a motion.
Okay. You said all in favor? Aye.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Moving on.
I do think we do have a current invoice from a vendor. And while there may be a disagreement, I don't know if... Well, I guess where we've left it right now is that staff is not directed to pay those invoices. And I'm wondering if I could get further direction on how to proceed with a vendor who has done work on our behalf.
Well, I think any vendor who does work on our behalf is going to be paid. I believe, George, if you can get that vendor's packet and take a look at that. I know, Kyle, you had opposed to it. If you could do that maybe, George, tomorrow or even after the meeting. And I have reviewed it, and I'm okay with it. But once we do get, you know, the majority, then we'll go ahead and pay them. But they don't have to be expected to wait until our next meeting.
We're just talking about two invoices, correct?
Yeah, that is our solicitor, that our solicitor, Mark Jonas's firm, had invoiced us. If you did review them, if you're okay with it, you can make a motion to approve them.
Okay.
So, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you reviewed them, George?
Wait, the two bills?
Yes.
No, I don't have any of the bills.
Okay. All right, well, if you can review them tomorrow, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
George, while you're reviewing those, I'd ask you to take a second look at the last invoices as well and the total amount due, just so that we're clear on why I'm questioning what I'm questioning right now. Go ahead, Jason, sorry.
Okay, no problem. All right, let's move on. The staff and the committee reports. We have a December 2nd Plan and Commission minutes. We have the, I'm sorry, the staff's reports. Where are they?
Okay. I've got two points of order on this. One, we're all meeting remotely, so those staff reports were included in the Dropbox link that was shared by Lisa Traski over the course of the week. That's the first point. Second point is, is we have consolidated staff and committee reports into Roman numeral number five for the purpose of adopting them all at once. However, at a past meeting, the fire company has asked for a standing exception to being incorporated into a consent agenda so that they may make their report orally. So if you're not comfortable with the reports because you've been unable to access them, I would submit we table. If you would like to, as a consent agenda, adopt all of the reports except for the fire companies, because the deputy chief has asked to make that report orally, you may make a motion to that effect.
I think we are, I think we should table them until next meeting. Because I'm having trouble pulling both. I have the document on the computer on the side that I don't have, without having a physical copy in front of me to go back and forth.
I had an ability to open it up, and I read those, well, today and the other day when she sent them. George, if you read them and you want to make it, it'd save us a trip for next meeting. It's up to you, George.
Yeah, no, I've looked at them. I'll make a motion to accept all the staff and committee reports as outlined A through F.
And I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm just saying the voting. Okay. Now, moving on.
Luke and Board members, typically we do give a long report. You guys will have it based on our presentation that we're going to present to you tonight. The only thing I would like to mention is, we did have a significant fire in the township on Tradition Lane that I believe all three supervisors were made aware of. It was a tremendous effort by the volunteers at East Brandywine Fire Company, happening late at night. And it was just by the grace of God that the residents were able to get out with a working smoke alarm that was able to get them out of the house as they woke up to a house full of smoke. That's the only thing I want to share with you, because on the next agenda, next page, the fire company's going to have a nice presentation for you three tonight.
Moving on to old business. The proposal for the revised 2021 budget process. George?
Yep, okay. Last meeting, I talked about an idea to eliminate the Budget Committee as it stands right now. And basically decided that further discussion should be had on this topic. So before I, you know, opened it up for further discussion, I never had a chance to share what my replacement solution would be. Budget Committee has run its course over 20 years, and I think the values or the benefits have lessened over time. The time Luke and staff spends to do five meetings, department heads, two three-hour meetings, four or five meetings, is a lot. And I think we could save those hours and funnel them into something more productive. No citizens really show up. These are public meetings. And the only citizens that show up typically are the bond bill representatives. Luke has now done this budget process, I believe, by himself for the past five years. He knows the whole format, the process, and I think he knows that there's only going to be certain things that change each year. And those changes are going to have to be approved by supervisors. So even though the volunteers are committed, they do a good job, I think I have a better solution. So in lieu of it, I propose an extra Township Supervisor Public Session in October or November. After the department head, the chief, everybody, Luke and his crew have gotten all their plans together and have put together their budget. So this would be a public meeting, open to all the citizens of East Brandywine, to listen, to see what the thoughts are and what the supervisors feel. So they would give us their plans, their budget, their personnel issues, raises, new expenses. I mean, right now, chief over the years has done a phenomenal job with his budget. He's got the process down, so there aren't many different things that come in in his budget. And Luke has been doing the other half for five years. So I think this would streamline the budget process, give citizens a more realistic opportunity to sit in. Because when we approved it at the end of this year, I don't believe one citizen called in about any item on the budget. Supervisors would then listen to what the plans are, what the requests are, and either be able to approve it or ask for more substantiation. I think that would be more streamlined. In addition, there's one big hole that we haven't been addressing, I believe, in the township for a while, and that's the long-term issues. I think we need to start looking at projecting the budget out five, 10 years, looking at what revenues are expected from the tax collector, and what, you know, what items we know are going to go up, et cetera. We really got to get our hands on the proper level of capital funding. What do we need in our four funds? They've been diminished over the years with, I don't think, any real solid effort of trying to replenish them. And there's other long-term projects that are to be done. What I'm proposing is that two of the volunteers on the Budget Committee have agreed to be what I call two financial volunteers, Ken Adair and Steve Petlet, who spent a lot of time this year on the budget on their own time at home. They would be willing, and this would be basically like free consulting services, but they're willing to address these issues and give us a finished product to the Board, you know, reject the budget. What do we have to kick in every year to get capital funding? What is the proper amount that we probably should have in all these four funds? So they're also willing to sit down with Luke if he desires, or any of us, in order to do a quarterly review. What are the expenses versus revenue like after the quarter is over? They're willing to do that. So that's my solution. That's what I recommend that we replace the committee with. Open for discussion.
Yeah, George, I had actually received three phone calls from Budget Committee members after the last discussion, and at least two of them said, "It sounds like we're getting fired for volunteering." I understand what you're saying, doing the one option meeting in October. However, I feel as though the transparency is more important than anything else. I would almost suggest, if your concern is George, or is Luke and the staff time getting eaten up, I would suggest that the Budget Committee meet on its own without supervision and does their own option for the township, and then we compare the two. Just a suggestion, but again, I got several emails and phone calls after the last township meeting suggesting the termination of the Budget Committee.
Any other comments?
I actually think that, I do agree with George that we should be trying to minimize the amount of time with staff if we have the volunteers, and we have the ability to do that. So not that, you know, I say we're firing one, but I do agree, though, that I think it would be prudent for us to reorganize that committee, you know, to George's suggestions. It might be, if there's a motion.
I do have a comment.
Yeah.
I've had the opportunity to talk to the Board members. I've had an opportunity also to talk to a couple of the committee members. And I do agree with George in the sense that what the purpose of the Budget Committee has been over the years has kind of lost its way. I mean, we're there to prepare a budget, but a lot of the discussions we've had in the past year, it became evident to me that we were trying to solve problems and answer questions that only the Board can answer. And it makes it very difficult to prepare the budget when we don't have answers to very difficult questions. So George's idea of us at least preparing our initial budgets and then coming before the Board of Supervisors. George, I'll just throw in, one of the things we also discussed was doing a written summary of what that year's budget looks like, and if there's any major requests that we have, we put it in writing and why. And then at the public meeting, try to, you know, answer questions and explain to the Board members what it is we need in the budget. Many people, I mean, we do have the biggest budget in the township, but a lot of people don't understand that 80, I would think about 85% of the police budget are items that are already locked in from things such as the contractual obligations with salaries, benefits. Then we get our numbers in from our insurance carriers. And so the actual preparation of the budget is pretty much already done right at the beginning of the budget. Where we get into discussions and where we need the, you know, long-term planning is, where are we getting money for infrastructure upgrades? You know, we're talking about fuel pump, highway wants another garage, all of us want hiring. The Budget Committee can't answer those questions. It's, we need the insight of Ken and Steve and anyone else that wants to be on, you know, I call it like a citizens' finance committee. But we need that expertise to help us and help the Board decide what we're going to do year to year. So I support what George's idea is. And I think that having Ken and Steve there for us to bounce off of, you know, in addition to the public meeting and whatever else the Board wants to do to keep this process transparent, is, I think is a direction, or at least one year, we should try it to see how it works out.
So, yeah, I mean, I agree. I just don't know, how would we go about doing this, Luke? Would we have to do just a resolution to adopt this, or just a motion to?
I can't hear you. Yeah, we can't hear you.
That is actually my microphone off. I'd like to start before I go into the procedural portion of how we set up an advisory committee or how we unset up an advisory committee, by just kind of dovetailing on the chief's remarks relative to the way that this process has evolved over time and into a statement of support for Mr. Sherbach's proposal. Let me say that it's been my pleasure working with the Budget Committee over these years, and there have been a great many excellent innovations that have come from the minds who have served on that committee. Among them have been amendments to the monthly recording that the Board utilizes. Among them has been suggestions about the moving of encumbered funds out of the general fund and into special bank accounts. These have been excellent structural and procedural suggestions that come from the many people who have served on this committee. I would say that the 2021 Budget Committee process was hamstrung by some very important decisions that needed to be made and could only be made by the Board. And it's unreasonable to expect the volunteers to listen to a presentation from either a committee member or from a department head. And that suggestion involves needing to raise taxes or needing to hire a person. Raising taxes and hiring people are things that are set, policies that are set by the Board of Supervisors. And in that way, I think that the suggestion that a draft is prepared by staff, and then there is a public meeting at which the presentation is made to the Board, and the Board can make those high-level directions, and staff can return with a final budget for your consideration, is, I appreciate Mr. Sherbach's initiative in making this proposal. Now, as it relates to the, we have a committee. The Budget Committee is an ad hoc committee. There's no part of the East Brandywine Township Code that describes terms or membership qualifications or the number of total members who serve on it. Appointment to the Budget Committee was typically done at the beginning of the budget process, around June. At your organization meeting, no members were appointed to the Budget Committee. So I would say the very short answer on if it is the Board's will to no longer utilize the services of the Budget Committee, no action whatsoever is required.
Make a motion to accept this proposal that I just gave?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Hey, can I, while we're talking, back on the subject. You want me to look at two of Jonas's bills, and you're going to give me the invoices to it? But can I make a motion that if I find these two bills acceptable, that those get paid at this point, at this time?
Yeah, if you want to, you can make that motion, and yeah, that's fine.
I'd like to make the motion that I will review the bills when given to me, and if I feel they're in line, then I think they should be paid. If I don't think they're in line, then it'll come back to us to look, to review further.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Just remind you, George, to get a copy of the last ones as well. We're already, you'll see the exorbitant numbers.
If you could just send that email then to, if you could send the email to us, that's fine, Kyle.
Somebody give me what you want me to review, that's all.
All right, well, I'll second that motion, George. All in favor?
Aye.
Luke, could you also, could you also pull our last solicitors? Not the invoices, but just the total for the quarter, for the first quarter of the first year? You know, I want these guys to see apples to apples to what I'm seeing and what they're not.
Yeah, shoot that email in to the Board after the meeting, and Kyle, that'd be great, so that way we can move on. So moving on now, it's the East Brandywine Fire Company's Station's Improvement Presentation.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for the time tonight. We have some exciting presentation and discussion. I'm actually going to pass it off to and introduce John Edwards, President of the East Brandywine Fire Company, for this presentation.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great, good evening. And Luke, am I capable of sharing my screen if I just do screen share?
Yes, you can. Or do you intend to share anything beyond your PowerPoint that I have in advance?
No.
Then I think that the easiest way is for me to host it. You will have buttons at the bottom of the screen by which you can advance the slides. So I'm going to go ahead and load your PowerPoint.
Great, thank you.
And we probably want to go to the first page.
That would be ideal.
Alright, so you have, you have a left and right button located at the bottom. You can drive and present.
That's your new, that's your new fire station, huh?
George, that is the new station that we're super excited about. So, listen, on behalf of all the officers and members of East Brandywine Fire Company, we can't be more excited in order to share this with you. We've been working on this for some time and while it's exciting for us as a fire company, I think it's going to be remarkable for East Brandywine Township and the residents. So what we wanted to do this evening was to share with you and walk you through what is going to be a major fire station renovation project. So recognizing that you have a full agenda, I'm going to try to be relatively brief. This is the things that we're going to cover in a relatively short period of time. That's a little bit about, and we don't need this for this group, fire company overview, a little bit about the building history, some of the current challenges that we are experiencing, the scope of this project, the costs, some funding sources and next steps. So everybody on this call, and I see there's several community members, so that's also exciting, recognizes that you have a phenomenal fire company. We serve predominantly East Brandywine Township and we cover parts of West Brandywine and Upper Euclid. So a bunch of volunteers doing remarkable things. This is actually a photograph of the crew from the tradition lane fire. So when we talk about our building and where we're housed, just a little bit of history, and that is the main building that you saw on that slide. The three bays and the two smaller sections was built in 1962. In 1967, there was the addition of the banquet hall that's toward the rear and you're going to see that in just a moment, as well as the kitchen addition. And then in 1992, there were two apparatus bays added and a second floor. For those of you who have not, are not familiar with the building, this is, this is the south elevation. It's the front of the station. I think most of, probably everybody on this call drives by this and this is a view that you're familiar with, but I want to make sure that we go 360 degrees around the building. So this is the west elevation. This is looking from the parking lot. And as you look at the building, you're going to notice, you know, several things that we're going to be talking about in a little bit and that is the things like more different roof line. You're looking at, you know, decaying facade. You're looking at a parking lot which needs to be redone. All these things we're going to get into. This is a, this is a view that most people don't get. This is from the building and I'll be honest with you, some of our own members didn't even recognize this. And that is, is that we're actually built into the ground. So, and then this is the east elevation. This is from, looking from 322 towards the, the building. So that's a 360-degree view of our current station. And hopefully you've committed some of those to memory because I think you're going to see a remarkable transformation in just a moment. This is also the roof line. Just, this is going to be important. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this area in particular is going to become important in just a few moments. The architect and the contractor refers to this as that, they use the term bathtub. So this is the, this is our current challenges with the building. Obviously, the main building, 60 years old, is programmed for a fire company of that era. The additions that were put on in 1967 and 1992, they were really done to address specific needs at that time, not necessarily a comprehensive vision. So obviously you drive by, you guys can see this, there's a decaying facade. We're getting water infiltration both from groundwater being built into the earth like that as well as the roof because of dire need of a, of a new roof. Age mechanicals, I think if you've sat in our banquet hall at all, you recognize that our HVAC system is six, six air conditioners, probably each of which is 40 years old. So we just talked about the roof, the parking lot. There's no office space. The sleeping quarters, there's just, we, on the second floor, built a small room where we have six bunks. There's no individual sleeping quarter. And I think if you've driven by, you see that we now have equipment sitting outside of the station. Most importantly, and I think one of the things that we wanted to specifically address tonight is, is, you know, the lack of community space. And this is one of the aspects of this project that we are most excited about. And it's not ADA compliant. So those are the challenges that we're dealing with in 2021. What's interesting is, you know, I pulled building committee minutes. These are minutes from 2004 that the fire company was addressing innovation. So think about this, 17 years ago, and I sort of highlighted the challenges here. They're a list really of the same things we're dealing with today. Office space, the lack thereof, private living quarters, showers, conference rooms, elevator, additional apparatus area in a building facelip. These are all things that as an organization, we've been trying to address now over the course of 17 years. So we're now at a point where it's time to act. And so we've put together a really great team and I have to be honest with you. We have worked collaboratively with S.W. Howder. Frank and his group have done phenomenal. They are the contracting group. John McDonald from KSM Architects, he and his team. We work with Volunteer Financial Services. They do a phenomenal job. Obviously, everybody on this call is familiar with Dave Summers from Eagle Investments and he's been assisting us as well. And the reality is, is, you know, that we had the opportunity to showcase this to the supervisors, I want to say two weeks ago now. And, you know, the partner with the, the partnership with the township is essential for our success. I mean, the township is us, we are the township. So when we talk about the scope of the project and what we're entertaining, it's really a renovation of almost 100% of the building. None of the building goes untouched. We'd be increasing our square footage. Now that would all be on the blacktop. So we'd be increasing the square footage of the building by 5,470 square feet. What we would be doing, and I think you saw on that, the front of the building, we would be increasing, we have six, but if you notice that middle bay is a very small bay and the bay to the parking lot side is also a half bay. So what we're going to be doing in this project is increasing to six full depth bays that can handle major fire apparatus and some of the other apparatus like our QRS and utility. And then we're going to be creating four small bays. So we can take that equipment that's sitting outside currently and move it inside. It's going to have an upgraded HVAC system. It's going to have expanded usage, so it's going to have private sleeping quarters, offices and, and meeting rooms. New parking lot, new roof, elevator. And again, we think that probably the most, one of the most important aspects is it's going to have a community center. And one of the things that I think we've all recognized is, is the township doesn't have a place like that currently. It's also going to have smaller meeting rooms for township residents as well. And as we moved into this virtual world and, you know, hopefully we're not here forever, but the opportunity to have space where you could, you know, have a meeting if you're telecommuting for work where you may need to just use that space for, you know, a day in order to bring, you know, different team members together from your place of employment i- is essential. So that's the scope of the project. This isn't showing very well, Luke. I'm not sure what happened to this. This is not the way that this slide looks. Let me see if it looks like this way. Luke, I don't know if it's possible to flip that slide. You're not going to get the true blueprint.
I cannot, but I can confirm that the PowerPoint that this PDF is made out of looked exactly this manner. It's how it rendered on my screen.
Okay.
So even if I could open this as a PowerPoint, I could not fix this image.
Okay, well, we'll work through it. For orientation purposes, this should be rotated. Obviously, the station does not look that long. What you're seeing is the first and second floor. I tried to give you a quick tour. So when we talked about six full bays, you're seeing the apparatus in six full bays. Room gets opened up. Honestly, we have added this engineer's room, this laundry and this decontamination room, which is, you know, essential to clean up after a fire, maintaining the fire apparatus. What we have worked with the architect in doing is we've completely flipped the way that we have done business. And what I mean by that is, is we used to, our banquet hall was on the first floor. And when you think about our community space and our operational space, they were really conjoined. So what the architects have done is literally the entire first floor is operational space, right? That's your fire services space. The entire second floor becomes meeting space and conferencing space. So now it makes it much easier in terms of community usage because the community, while they're coming into your station and anybody on this call recognizes that we love having the community in our station, they're not in your operational space. So it makes it much easier to maintain. And obviously you never worry about interference or any harm coming to any individual because they're separated out. So the entire second floor becomes meeting room and large conferencing space. And I apologize for the way that this looks on your screen because you really do not get the full effect. So we did have first floor highlights, we did have second floor highlights. I do want to just make sure I highlight for the group. And it's going to be difficult to do, but this area right here is what we would kind of call a pre-function area. If you were having a meeting where people can gather. This is a large meeting room that'll hold a little over 100 people. And then we have two smaller conferencing rooms, obviously, and then the bathroom facility, storage and a small kitchenette. And then this is actually an outdoor deck. So you are having, so for instance, you know, a birthday party, a retirement celebration. These doors will open up to an outdoor deck. So the design, the amount of time, energy and effort that has gone into this and the way that it transforms the way that we do business is really phenomenal. And the, and the space that it provides for the community is remarkable. So I'm hoping these next slides are going to show well because if you recall, I gave you a 360-degree tour of the building. At the end of this project, this is what our building will look like. So, you know, we think it's a unbelievable transformation. And we think that this is going to anchor, you know, the center of Guthrysville. You know, we're going to move, we recognize while we've tried to maintain our building and the volunteers do a really good job, at the end of the day, very little money has actually been put into the building. All of the monies has gone into operations. So, you know, to me, this, you know, as Hopewell Road Pharmacy sort of transformed that corner, this is going to transform, you know, the other corner because this is what the community will see. So just give you a couple other, you know, perspectives. This will be the, the front. We love the glass doors for transparency sake. We want the community to see in, into the building. This tower is going to be illuminated nicely. And then this is the, from the parking lot side. So we will now have a real main entrance. If you see that entire second floor, that's going to be the, the meeting space I talked about. You know, there will be an elevator in this tower, there'll be stairwell as well. And then if you look toward the back, those four bay doors are the new additions where we can now get the equipment out from outside. And the, right now that white shed and the pavilion will be, will be gone. And then if you look right above the red doors, that's that rooftop area that we talked about, which the main meeting room will open up toward. So, you know, we hope that you like it as much as, as we do. Like we said, we think it's transformational. So one of the things that has been asked to us is to why renovate as compared to building from the ground up? We think it's an ideal location. We think it's an ideal location for response times. We think we have an ideal location for volunteer access. We recognize that by renovating this building, we've cut costs by half. And that's confirmed by the builder as well as the architect. We know we're avoiding land development costs. One of the most important aspects is we're really good stewards of the community's money. And we wanted to make sure, there has been some recent investments. We did put a new boiler in, right? We recently redid the floor. We put that area where we have the, our fire gear. And we wanted to make sure that we reused that investment, that that did not go to waste. So that's incorporated into this plan. We recognize, I mean, as much as we've tried to do this, you know, keep this building as nice as we can, we're going to be removing blight from the hub of the community. And the other thing that we wanted to make sure we did was to try to preserve the history, you know, in East Brandywine Township and preserve this building. And, you know, we started and that building was obviously that you saw on the title slide was the original building. You know, we're going to be maintained, we're just going to give it a fresh new look. So, so what are the next steps? People want to know what, you know, what this project cost. So total cost on this project is $3.1 million. Next steps are, you know, while, you know, the, we've met with the board and, you know, you all have been great and, you know, Luke has been great and incredibly, you know, supportive and, and, you know, we very much appreciate that. The reality is, is obviously we need a financial commitment in order to, to move forward. We've got to finalize the building design and floor plan. We're nearing completion on that. Obviously, we have to secure the appropriate permits. The builder will be, will be doing that. While we've pre-approved for our loan, we've got to finalize some of the steps to secure the monies. We, most importantly, and the chief will be handling this, most importantly, we will be developing a plan to remain operational because the construction time will be anywhere between 10 months and one year. We plan to remain operational out of that building and/or the parking lot for that entire duration. So we're right now taking the steps in order to do so. And then obviously begin construction. now taking the steps in order to do so. And then obviously, begin construction. So, you know, when we think about this, we, you know, I mean, this is something we've talked about for a long time. I mean, any board member, past or present, recognizes that this is something that, you know, the fire company has needed to do. We think most residents recognize it's an important, you know, element to our success. But we also think it's consistent with, you know, when, when the board commissioned this strategic assessment, and they put together a vision for the township, you know, they commented specifically on the building. And, you know, this is pulled right from this report. And that is, is, you know, we've seen this significant increase in growth in the township. And, you know, one of the things that they have noted in, when the consultants came and reviewed the fire company, you know, they said, you know, compared to other municipal facilities, you know, the fire company looks like a financially strapped university frat house, other than a volunteer fire department, which is highly professional. It's cramped, the roof leaks, it lacks any semblance of workable office space. And in their recommendations, in their recommendations, they spoke about creating, you know, the township a separate building fund. So, we're going to talk a little bit about, you know, funding sources. And so it's a sort of a multi-pronged approach. And obviously, probably most significant is municipal contribution. We've done really well on our direct mail fund campaign, and we are with choice marketing to develop a marketing effort around this. We, as a fire company, always go after grants. All right? It's time consuming. You're not always assured of getting them. But we always go after grants. We're actually in the process, we just received a $15,000 grant from, from the officers of the state fire commissioner that's been put toward this project. The other thing is, is, you know, when we're looking at grants, we want to look at grants that can help us, recognizing, you know, we have a lot of operational needs. So for instance, we're in the process of submitting a FEMA grant for self-contained breathing apparatus, which is going to cost us over $350,000. So if we are able to secure that grant, then we free up, you know, other monies. Everybody on this call recognizes grants are not something that's assured. So, you know, our plan is to go after these grants. We also have sponsorship opportunities, which we're going to be publicizing, legacy giving and corporate donations. This is going to be incredibly important, because we think the residents are, you know, very generous. And, you know, to help kickstart this, we actually went out and solicited from one donor a $50,000 donation to help get us started. So, I think that's really, it says a lot about our community and, you know, how they feel about the fire company. So, we wanted to make sure that the community had an opportunity to see this. And we wanted to make sure, while we know that we had really unwavering support from, from all of the supervisors and from Luke, the reality is, is we need to solidify that support in terms of a financial commitment. And that's where we're at this evening. So, you know, I'm going to ask Ken to talk about, you know, what that looks like. I'm trying to keep an eye. I think there might have been a couple of questions in the chat group, but I've not been able to. Jim, I think I did address the grant-ish, grant question that you had posed. And happy to answer any other questions anybody else might have.
So, John?
Yeah, Ken.
So, yeah, so I think, you know, we've had the opportunity to meet with the supervisors and Luke. We had some conversations with tax collector as well, reviewing some numbers and, you know, presenting or designing a few different financial plans. As John mentioned, we are in the process of doing a whole sort of host of fundraising, or we're getting ready to kick some, a lot of that off, as well as grant opportunities. So what we're looking for tonight, I think, is a, what would be ideal, is we prepare these documents for our lenders, is requesting a letter of support from the municipality for that building fund outlined by the, by that presentation that the, that the township commissioned a few years ago, of 100,000 a year towards the debt obligations. And when we look at what that sort of equates to, to sort of put it in perspective, sometimes numbers sound large, it's a lot of prospective items. You know, it's roughly about, by rough calculations, around $35 on the average household. So I think with that, we'd like to sort of open it up to sort of discussion and feedback, and like to move forward with that request.
Kyle, do you have any questions? George?
I guess my only question would be how, if we haven't applied, or if you guys haven't applied for grants, assuming that, that our contribution would be taxpayer money, I guess, you know, we got to figure out if a grant is made available, does that go back to the taxpayer, or does that go, you know, go back towards the fire department? And again, I don't know how this plays out. I'm just thinking.
Yeah, no, agreed. You know, Kyle, we talked about that as well. You know, one thing that we say a lot, and we emphasize, and will continue to say a lot, is, you know, our primary goal is to be partners with the community and the township, as well as primarily good stewards of the money. We don't want to ask for any money that we don't need. Part of the issue we have here is, and, you know, we've been pre-approved for a 20-year loan. Part of the value of now is the cheapness of money. Now is a good time to take debt. And what's important is, when we make a commitment like this, is that we have our municipality as a backstop. So, you know, should we get, you know, there's some significant loan, significant grants out there. We've seen it with, more recently, with Fame Fire Company, Phoenixville Fire Company. That would be an opportunity to share that feedback back to the board and be able to reduce the debt obligations and the requirements from the township.
All right. We do have, now might be, I mean, and sorry if I'm putting the cart before the horse, but we do have also Mr. Wolf on the, in our audience. This might be a good time for him to jump in for the bond questions. And I know we have, we have Dave Summers as well, online. I guess my other questions would be, you know, again, if this is, you know, a taxpayer-funded project, would it be smart of the supervisors to suggest going to the idea of a bond? Or would it be smart of the supervisors to go the route of increasing the fire tax? And what would be better for all parties? I see, Mr. Wolf, you are on. You've heard the presentation, hopefully, and maybe you have some insight.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's an interesting concept. I've worked on some firehouses in my day. I don't think we're going to be able to answer the question tonight. But I think the approach might be warranted. We need to examine the terms of the bank loan, drill down into the details, and try and compare that to the options of having the township borrow the money in its own name. There's also, besides the economic comparison, there's also policy questions. So I really don't think we can, you know, do that. But I'd be very help, be very willing to try and help, you know, with my share of the analysis. I'll just say that even the strongest, strongest fire company is considered by lenders to be weaker than weakest township, because townships have taxing power. So, you know, you start out with the bias that the township with taxing power gets a different rate than the very, very strongest and best-intentioned fire company.
Yeah. And I mean, me personally, first of all, you're, you know, I sat through your presentation last, I don't know, week and a half ago, and obviously today, I think, I think, A, you guys are well beyond where this should have been done years ago, not by any fault of your own. You know, it's 1962, 1967, and then a small addition in 1993. I mean, most, most sporting teams get a new stadium every few years, and here we are. You know, you guys are still in the 60s. So, first of all, I think, you know, and I'm not even concerned with the, with the ask. I don't think that that was unreasonable either. I'm more concerned with the how, not the, not, you know, not the monetary value. And obviously, like, maybe Ken just said this, rates right now, and I'm assuming, Mike, you were alluding to this, for a township, we're looked as though a credit score of, considered 850. I'm just giving it for example. Where we probably would be, where money is, rate interest, interest rates are low right now, it would probably benefit us to do it that route. However, I don't know. And that's why, that's why we're very fortunate to have people like Mr. Wolf and Mr. Summers, who are, you know, in our township, helping us with these issues. George, do you have any questions?
And Kyle, again, I would say, you know, that also, as far as a precedent, wouldn't be of either. You know, about maybe seven to 10 years ago, the Engine 49.5 loan was taken out in the township's name because of rates as well. And that, and that was paid off and closed out about four years ago, three years ago. So I think, you know, I guess the, I'm sorry, did George have other questions, or?
I believe, I think he started to. I don't know if George's there. Maybe he's got disconnected.
Technical problem, please. Please proceed. I'll hunt that down.
Hey, Luke, real quick, could you remind George, if he was booted, what, you got to hit star? What is it?
Yeah, it is star six to unmute yourself, anybody who's on a phone who's been promoted to a presenter. But I'm not sure that's the problem. I'll be working on it in the background here. Please continue.
I guess my question is, John and Ken, as far as your, the fire company's capital reserves today, what is, what is, are you, are you guys allocating those funds into this project? Or how is that, what is that coming to play in your budget?
Yeah. So, we, as far as our savings, we are, as far as the preapproval, we, in our first model, have identified or allocated about $500,000 to put down, is kind of what we're looking at. And the challenge with our capital savings is, it's twofold, in that it's partially sort of identified for this, but as well as our apparatus replacement program for, you know, as you're aware, two years ago, we bought some, a lot of expensive equipment. We have a little bit of time, but, you know, with the fleet, you know, every five years or so, there's, there's a large purchase there as well. So it's a combination. But we do intend to put, put some funds down as part of the down payment to kick this project off.
Sure, because I know about the other apparatuses and whatnot for your other things. You know, you got to separate that, you know, for those, and then just try to get good financing now for the entire project, so to speak. So that's.
Exactly. And we've had some of these conversations with Mr. Summers as well. We look at what our investments are able to do for us as far as return versus the rate of borrowing, and, you know, that sweet spot to be the most effective with the funds. So, I mean, one option as well is, and Luke and I have talked a little bit about this bond, is, you know, if we go the route of the debt in the fire company's name, and, you know, the fire tax model, those funds aren't really required till 2022, which gives time to establish those, like those funds for those future debt obligation payments, because we have the funds for the down payment. The bond, I agree, also has a lot of lucrative opportunity, as Mr. Wolf sort of presented. What I would ask, as far as, in order to keep this process effective, is look, you know, look towards or move for approval and of a letter of support for the, the funding for the, for the fire tax model, so we can at least present that to our lenders. And in the interim, then meet with the township and Mr. Wolf to look for if we can get a more favorable scenario, which would be lovely, be phenomenal if that could take place. I think that would then give us the confidence in the backstop, so we can continue the developing and planning with our contractors while establishing the best-case scenario for all parties.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's, I thought you just wanted the support right now. You just want the township's support on that. And then you guys, we can work, try to figure what's coming.
And we could be, we could be available as soon as tomorrow morning with Luke and Mr. Wolf to start going through numbers and figuring out what's needed.
Real quick, I know, I know Mr. Summers has some questions on this topic too, but one question, this could be for either Mr. Summers or Mr. Wolf. Aside from doing it in a bond, what's the, what's the, what would be the, would there be any issues with approval was given on a set amount, and then a new board took over three, four years from now, and they said, well, we're not doing that? How does, aside from the bond, how would that, what would be the most feasible for that, for guarantee commitment?
I'll try to answer that, Kyle. I think it would be critical. And what no one has mentioned here, and this is more for Mike's benefit than anyone, the commitment, the bank commitment they have is 3%. As we looked at the numbers for handling the debt, the fire company will still need some commitment from the township in order to continue that 20-year loan. As it was mentioned, the capital reserve fund and the fire company has been a good stewards to save, to get to the point they're at. And, you know, this is, this is a great project. I'll add that to the, to the topic. But it's just, it's just not going to, what they have is just not quite enough.
I'm sorry, I have a remote meeting point of order. First point of order, the disembodied voice that we just heard, for the purposes of the minutes, is volunteer extraordinaire Dave Summers. And also, I have promoted the phone number associated with Mr. Sherbach. Mr. Sherbach, you would need to hit star six to unmute your line. That is all.
Okay, done.
I can hear you now, George. Did you have any questions on this?
No, I just, I just want to get to the point where we sit down and look at one option versus the other. But I think we can give, it looks like the fire department wants us to say at least we would do the 30, you know, the fire tax increase, because it sounds like they want to get a document to the bank fairly soon. Is that correct?
That's correct, George.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and that gives us time then to figure out with Mr. Wolf whether the bond. the bond option has any validity.
Let me just give you an example of the kind of question that I'm gonna have to ask, the bank's quoting a rate of 3%, I've never seen a bank fix a rate for 20 years, they always reserve the right to change the rate at certain fixed intervals. So what's the fixed interval, how often can it change, what's it capped at, you know, and what's the index based on, when the township borrows for 20 years, it's locked for 20 years with no reset?
Right.
And that's, that's sometimes an important consideration.
Yes, that's a great question.
Right now, rates are at the 64-year low, and even a fire company can afford 3% today, what's it gonna be nine years from now?
Right.
Ken, do you?
Are we saying that the, are we saying that the only option then is the fire tax increase to do this?
I don't know for sure, but.
So, so Mr. Wolf, we have confirmed two things, after our discussions, we did confirm is no principal to pay down and get out, which, which gives us future opportunities. It's my understanding that is fixed, it's, it's a tax-exempt loan, and to state bank, but again, I think more than happy to meet with you and with the partners that were on the, the slide prior to, primarily volunteer financial services, who is coordinating and handling these documents for us.
Okay, so, so what's the action, what's the action item that you would like first, Ken, just, you just want us to attach a pledge of support?
Yeah, I would like to pledge a support for, for this project with the, for the $100,000, you know, barring additional discussions, that we can find better savings and better opportunities through other means of the, of the township. And to the extent folks are available a year, to the extent folks are available, even as early as, as tomorrow, we can, we can get on, on the phone and start to coordinate, but I think if we have that, through the modeling that we've seen so far, that, that up to 100, we'll cover it, and, and again, we've got a lot of different funding models, there's gonna be a lot of, you know, on a 20-year loan, there, there are a lot of variables that we're addressing, in many ways favorable variables. So pledging that, that letter of support tonight, and second item would be meetings with our financing partners, including Dave Summers and Tracy, and Mr. Wolf and Luke, to, to work through better options.
Real quick, real, real quick, Ken, Dave and, and Mike, the one question I have is, and I'm just thinking out loud here, so forgive me for the ignorance, if, if the township were to, to secure a bond in a, in a, I don't know, let's just say a million-dollar bond, and they're guaranteed an X rate of 2%, can the, can the, can that sit in an, in an account of some sort, and then fire tax be used to pay down that, that, that bond, and it's guaranteeing the taxpayers a rate of 2% for, for 20 years, versus, I don't know, is that an option?
Yes, I think so, in other words, you would issue a bond for whatever amount of money, if it's a tax-exempt bond, the IRS wants you to spend it within three years, doesn't sound like that's gonna be much trouble. And then you're gonna have semi-annual debt service on that loan, which doesn't change, and you can dedicate a special revenue stream, say the fire tax, to make those semi-annual payments. Payments would look like a mortgage, they'd be level through time, it wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't go up or down, what, basically like a mortgage, in the beginning, it would be a lot of interest and little principal, and at the end, it's all principal and little interest, but it's a level payment. In today's market, this very, very unusual market, the township's paying something on the order of about $60,000 or $65,000 or a million for 20 years.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, you know, I'm no, no stretch of imagination, any financial guru here, but I think that, you know, my two cents, that makes the most amount of sense.
So Kyle?
You know, with respect to future boards, I've been, I've been taught over the last 50 years, that a current board can't bind a future board in, you know, far into the future with policies and stuff.
Right.
If you take a general, out a general obligation bond, that's for which you pledge the full faith, credit, and taxing power, a future board, their only option is to pay it off, they can't just stop paying, and say, we don't believe in this project, or we wish they hadn't done it, they have to satisfy the loan, they can't, they can't just stop midstream.
Understood, okay. So I guess there's a lot of, a lot of stuff for you guys to talk about the next couple of days, but I think we've hammered out a good resolution to the problem, based off of what I'm hearing.
Can I, can I just ask you to do one bit of research, Luke told me that, he's been told that the fire company is a 501(c)(3), and the IRS cares about what the last number is, c)(3), c)(4), c)(5? It's better to be a c)(3), but we have to make sure you are.
It's a 501(c)(3).
Okay, that's, that's important. Of all the organizations I've met who were sure they were 501(c)(3)'s, at least half were.
I, I will, you know, you're making me doubt myself right now, but I am, I am 99% sure through all the paperwork and, and our tax returns, we will confirm that, I, I'm pretty sure we are.
Our club thought they were a 501(c)(3) for a year.
Ken, I guarantee you 99.9% of my support.
So, gentlemen, just to gain some clarity around this, this issue, so, you know, obviously, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and, and, you know, we've put a lot of energy and effort into this, and, and we want to take the next step, because if we don't take the next step, we'll be no different than the group that tried 17 years ago. So I think what I hear is, you know, and whether you have to do this in the form of a vote or not, it remains to be seen, is, is that the fire department has the full support of the supervisory staff of East Burney Line Township, and whether we go the path of $100,000 a year, which, to put this in perspective for those on the call, would be, you know, it's $100,000 a year for the building, there's still the operational, in total, it would be, for the fire department, about $322,000 a year, which seems to me to be a remarkable, remarkably, you know, sort of low amount of money to get fire service and a phenomenal building, get rid of the blight, and provide a community center, right? I mean, look around, you know, other people, other communities, municipalities are spending significantly more on just fire service alone. So, at minimum, you know, we'll get the $100,000 a year in terms of support, but recognizing our goal would be to get it in the cheapest way possible, and if that would be, if a bond is a better way to go, we'll work collaboratively with our team of financial experts, you know, Mr. Summers, VFS, Ken, and Bond Officer, and that may be the better way to go. But one way or another, we'll have your support.
Is there, this is George or Kyle want to make a motion, you know, for clarification? Go ahead, George.
If I hear it, it's the motion that we're the supervisors, they're willing to support the new fire department renovation and construction to the tune of $100,000 a year, notwithstanding knowing which way we're gonna support that figure.
And I'd like to just add to that, that any grant, you know, obviously would come off of that as well, just, you know, we're dealing with taxpayers' money, so we've got to be careful with that. So I'll second the motion.
All favor? Sorry, may I make a friendly amendment to the motion as it stands, it's already quite a compound sentence, but it seems to me the other portion of the, the motion would be, and further directing staff to work with the, the fire company, our bond agent, and to, to develop options for the financing of this project for presentation to the board.
Correct.
And I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
All right, move on.
Chairman, if I could jump in with a proposal for the order of business this remaining evening, I would point out that agenda items 7A and 7B.
Yeah, I got it.
Well, as subdivision and zoning applications, item 8A, as well as the ordinances and resolutions, item 9A, all have guests, and therefore, I would, if we could change the order of operations so that we're an hour and a half into this meeting, to be respectful of our guest time.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you, I'll just dive right into, to item number 7A, item number 7A, the action item is, staff is requesting permission to execute what is a proposal for professional services. The proposal pertains to our MS4 permit, the proposal is from our stormwater engineer, which is Cedarville. Joining me on the line, although I have not muted her, she is available for questions if you have them, is Beth Euler from Cedarville. The proposal for services is in the amount of $63,845. The budget for 2021 for this service, which is keeping our MS4 permit current, is $65,000. So I would respectfully ask the, the board's permission to author our staff to execute this proposal.
You want me to make a motion to accept the Cedarville Engineering Group proposal to provide support services for 2021 MS4 permit activity?
And I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the next item for which a member, a guest is public, is, is present, is, again, Beth Euler, and she's hanging on the line for item number 7B, which is a scope of, for planned stormwater repairs in the Marshall Creek subdivision. On behalf of staff, Matt will do the speaking on this proposal.
I have one question that I do, is, is Mr. Wolf, is he still on? I can't, the only thing I can see on my screen, Luke, is the funding sources still for the fire company?
Thanks for that.
That's okay, I don't know if, if we're.
Right, so, so my proposal was for the Roman numeral seven to do A and B, because we have Beth Euler on the line, and then on the next page, to do.
No, I understand, I understand, okay, sorry.
Those are things we have, I believe the renters are joining us as well, and, and I don't want them to be here till 10:00, waiting in line.
Understood, okay.
Matt Van Lu, you're, you're, you're on.
All right, we can't hear you. And does he need to hit star six?
He is joining us both as a phone caller and online, I'm gonna cross-reference the phone number that's there, Matt, you held up your cellphone, that's what you're joining us on?
Yeah.
Nod there, all right. You know, there's so many reasons why I'll be glad when this pandemic is over. I, I'm very sorry, Matt, I do not see your phone number in the list of options available of people who are joining us by phone, so I cannot promote you.
Does, does Beth, if she's on the phone and she can be promoted, does she have the rough overview, I believe it's just replacing the old galvanized pipe that was all rusted, for a view of the, I think it's like 100 or 200 linear feet?
Beth, sorry to put you on the spot, can you speak to this?
Um, yeah, slightly, I, I, I don't know all of the details in terms of the, of, of what Matthew is requesting approval to move forward with the board, but I know that there is pipes that, we, we did an assessment along Aspen Drive, and this is several months ago now, it's corrugated metal pipe, it's in need of replacement, some of the worst-conditioned pipes are on private property, Matthew's done some due diligence in terms of trying to determine the responsibility of, of those pipes, whether they're, they're to be privately maintained, they're outside of the right of way. So I think some of the question was regarding, you know, the scope of the replacement of the project, whether it would be just the publicly owned components, or whether some of the, the conditions that are failed and/or in poor condition would be considered to be replaced if it was on private property, and I don't know what his recommendation was going to be, I don't want to speak on his behalf.
He's actually on with us now.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome, sorry, I hope, I hope I was accurate enough for you.
No, you did very well, thank you.
Matt, if you can hear us, you were promoted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I apologize for that, I'm sitting here on my home computer and, I see I have my video, but not audio. First thing is, at one point last week, I sent a email to the board in reference to Aspen Drive, and it also included a page from the land development plan, there are, also Cedarville had provided a Aspen Drive stormwater assessment, and included in that are three basins, which are located within the township, and also that the stormwaters, I'm sorry, the stormwater pipes are failing throughout that development, they're all corrugated metal pipe, they're in different states of failing, and also the recommendation came from Cedarville to either replace or line, which means essentially pulling a plastic pipe inside of the existing pipe, and, and blowing it up to conform to the existing pipe. And so I've been contacted by two homeowners who have basins on their properties, one of them has two sinkholes, which I believe I had sent the photos, two sinkholes which are on their property, and the, the land development plan indicates that whoever is the owner of the property. the owner of the property is responsible for maintenance of the basins, and this would also include the stormwater pipes. So I've been, like I said, I've been contacted by two of the property owners, and they're looking for assistance from the township as far as possibly financial assistance, or even possibly piggybacking on the township's bid project for the stormwater replacement or lining. So I'm looking for direction from the board, but in response to this, but my main concern is that if the township contributes to work on a, on a personal property, this may set a precedent throughout the township. There's numerous basins that are located not only on private property, basins and stormwater system, not only located on private property, but also on homeowners associations' properties. And that's, that would be my concern. But, you know, I'm looking, looking for direction as to which way the board thinks I should head on this project.
Okay, thank you. Kyle, George, do you have any, anything, any questions, or what do you guys think about that?
Yeah, I agree. It might be a problem in the future with, with opening up a problem for the, going on some of the property, but I don't know what the solution to the problem is.
Can we do, could we do some kind of temporary easement agreement with the homeowner, you know, just for the improvements? I don't know how involved that is, something we could certainly have, you know, Mark look into for us, or give us some, provide us some kind of guidance on what we, the capabilities of what we could do and what we couldn't do according to the second class code. Maybe we'd go that direction.
Yeah, there, on the plan itself, it does show an easement, which I believe is from Aspen Drive to the basin. I'm not sure if it extends through the basin or not. So there is a easement there. My concern is that a lot of times, this easement gives the township the right, but not the responsibility to make any repairs or, or do any work within that, within private property. So if that, if the property owner did not maintain the stormwater pipe, then the township can go in there, but I believe that the township can backcharge that particular property owner for any repairs made by the township.
What is, your estimate of what these costs could be for that section that would be, that's on the, our residences' property?
That's shown in the report. I do not have the report with me right now, but that is shown in that stormwater assessment report.
Mr. Chairman, I have another moderator's point of order, and that is that a resident, a Mr. Aziz of the 100 block of Aspen is in the audience. Should you be able to recognize him?
Yes.
Good evening, gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Very good. Thank you for having me, and also thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. So I think, as Matthew mentioned, right, so I think there, my property, I'm located at 105 Aspen Drive, and on my property, there are basically two large sinkholes, which is opened up. And as the facts of they may be, I think Mr. Van Lu has mentioned that there are basically the stormwater basin, which is located on my property. However, the township pipe, which runs across the street, is connected to the pipe which runs onto my property and drains into the basin. The fact that there's basically other properties in the development, which is dependent on the, on this particular storm basin, is why I've requested that Mr. Van Lu also bring this topic here, because I believe it is something, I would say at minimum, a joint responsibility between the township and the homeowner to address this issue.
I think I understand what you're, I understand what you're saying as far as other properties are dependent upon draining onto the pipe, on your property. So it's, you know, you're, so to speak, in between where it's, it's imperative that the, that the, maybe the good order, you know, beyond you for it to work imperative. So there should be a group effort, so to speak.
Absolutely. It is a, basically, it's, it's an entire system, right? So if there's one point of failure, the entire development will suffer. So as a homeowner, of course, I would like to take care of the issue for the benefit of all my neighbors as well, but I also expect that, you know, that the township is also pitching in here. And that's my request.
And, and do you have what the estimate is in front of you, or roughly what you remember, recall it being?
I have not, have a, I haven't had a contractor come out and have a look at it based on the report that was submitted by Mr. Van Lu. I believe the pipe itself, I believe, if I remember, is somewhere around $40,000. Unfortunately, I believe this is absorbent. So I haven't gotten an independent estimate, so I'm really not sure if that includes both the pipe as well as the, just the installation, or simply the material. Maybe, maybe Mr. Van Lu can speak to that.
That, that estimate that was provided by, in the Cedarville report, should include, I'll say labor material, so in other words, the replacement cost, that's considering a subcontractor that would be doing the work.
I would expect it to be significantly lower than this. I also did some, my own research regarding the pipe itself. And the pipe itself is rated as a 40-year-old pipe. It's a sort of 40-year lifespan. The pipe is now 20 years old and has failed. So I don't know if that's, this particular fact makes a difference, but, you know, I would expect at least that a, a pipe that is rated for 40 years lasts much longer than 20 years.
I have to agree with you. I'm just trying to see what these, the estimate was. I'm trying to look it up right now.
So, so Matt, I'm not holding you to the number, but new piping, 40 to 60 installed, and then the other option was relining the pipe, the current pipe?
Correct. Now, the, for Mr. Aziz's property, the recommendation for that was to replace the pipe. Part of the reason is it's, it was in such bad condition that it would be difficult to line it. Lining is for pipes that are in, I'll say, fair condition. And also with his pipe being in a, I'll say in an open field, it's very, I'm going to say it's very easy, it's fairly easy to dig up the pipe and replace it. It's much, much more cost effective that way.
And is there any advantage? I mean, so, so right now, it's galvanized, it's failed, Schedule 20, Schedule 40, is there, is there an ability to do that at PBC? Is that what you're saying? Or no, it's a different type of a, of a piping, a poly pipe?
I believe the recommendation is to replace it with HDPE, which is a, you know, a plastic pipe. It's commonly used in, in new developments and redevelopment. In fact, quite a few of the newer developments in East Brandywine have HDPE.
And that's the black pipe with the grooves on the outside, the thicker for stormwater management?
Correct.
And what's, what's the diameter of the pipe? Just out of curiosity?
I believe it's 24-inch, but I can't say exactly. I should have had the report with me, but I neglected to do so.
I believe that's accurate.
And Matt, with the township, did the township accept or dedication of the stormwater system and maintenance program back with the development was done?
According to the land development plan, the township accepted, it does not state in there about the township accepting the stormwater system, but it does say that whoever is the owner of the property is responsible for maintaining the stormwater system. So the township owns 50-foot right-of-way, we actually have the, to the property, 50-foot right-of-way throughout the whole development for the roadway. So the stormwater system that's located within that right-of-way is the township's responsibility to maintain. Generally, whatever's outside of the right-of-way would be either a homeowner, a homeowners association, they're, they are responsible for the pipes located outside of the right-of-way because they own that particular property.
I think that we need to have Mark, our solicitor, weigh in and look at the, look closely at that easement and, and determine who is the owner. If the owner, it ends up being determined that the owner is the township, and it is a complete system, then, then the township's going to be responsible, you know, for the repair on these, leading to these three basins that were responsible for that. If not, then there's going to be some kind of joint effort or anything we can do to help. I think, but I think it definitely needs to be looked at by, you know, our engineer or solicitor a little bit closer before we make a determination. And that's my opinion. I think that's what we should, you know, recommend.
Okay. I also see that Greg Melso, who is the property owner of one of the other basins, he is on the call, and in the chat, he says that he has several estimates. I don't know if that would benefit us now, or whether, whether you want to go over that at a, at a later date.
I think, I think first, we just need to look, have the easements looked at closer to determine who's the owner, you know, of, of, of the language within the agreements and the notes on the plan. Kyle, George, is he okay with that? And then we.
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's important to note that we had another similar situation like this arise a little while back, but it's, it's more spelled out with stormwater management and people's individual rights on the property. You know, the unfortunate problem is that once the township goes down the slippery slope of a joint effort with somebody, then everybody that has shared, shared basins wants the same thing. The township would be bankrupt with the amount, with the amount of storm management we have, as well as basins that are joint effort, or even we have easements too. So I think, rather than committing anything at this point, I think it has to get brought to the solicitor. Solicitor has to review it. And again, keeping in mind, this is not an isolated instance. There's hundreds of these throughout the township.
Yeah, maybe if I can add one more point, please. And I think, as I said, this is a system, right? And it's, there are many other homeowners who are dependent on the flow of this water into the stormwater basin. As a private citizen and owner of this property, if at some point I decided that, you know what, I do not want township-lined pipe to connect to my private property, then there would be no other option really for the water to flow. And I think it benefits everyone that we sort of, we continue with that. But I think, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to put together what I need to do as the owner of the property also to ensure that this can continue to work. But ultimately, as the pri, as private property, and I say, okay, I do not want the pipe on my property, I do want it flowing, the water from other areas of the, of the township flowing onto my property, I mean, this would obviously cause issues in other areas of the, of the township.
Well, and that's for this solicitor, in my opinion. I mean, that's what an easement is. An easement is something that you signed over to the property when you purchased it. But again, let's let the solicitor read through it and see what he can figure out. No one's saying yay or nay right now. I think it's just a matter of trying to figure out the logistics of everything that's going on.
Well, you understand. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Yes.
Okay, I can send solicitor all the information that I have available for determination.
Okay. I think that's good. George, are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Jonas has got to take a look at it, and then we can determine what we need to do. Yep.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Pursuant to my proposal, I suggested the next agenda item be the subdivision and zoning application section, and in particular, the application of the owners of 229 Patriot Lane for zoning relief. I, for the purposes of the minutes, I'd like to note that we are joined by the property owners. And also, correct me if I'm wrong, your counsel, Peter Feinberg?
Yes, Peter Feinberg. This is Jenra and Phil Ryder. He is actually the owner of the pool company and has assisted us with this, with the engineers and putting the plans together, not our counsel.
Okay. For that clarification. By, by way of introduction of this issue to the board, I'd like to point out that, that you've made a zoning hearing application for relief. The relief necessary is because your proposed improvements would cause the total impervious surface area to exceed the amount allowed in the zone. I'd also like to point out that the, the board is happy to hear out your, your concerns, but ultimately, the zoning hearing board gets to decide the fate of your application. So if you're making the time to come today, but I wanted to just kind of start with that introduction. Is there something you'd like to, you'd like to start with an explanation of your project?
Sure. So, so basically, currently, we have been approved to put a deck in an outdoor living space on, on our property, being done by Keystone Custom Decks. Also, what we are looking to do is improve the sidewalk in front of our property. Right now, the builders have had flagstones on there. We're looking to put pervious pavers to replace those flagstones to make it look much better and also open up the pervious aspects. And the, we're also looking to put a small sidewalk to lead from our driveway to the deck that is being built. What we're asking for in the variance is actually the pool. We are looking to put a pool in, which, which we know is, is partially pervious. But we're also looking to put pervious pavers around the pool. In addition, we do, we have had the engineers signed off and submitted, and also, that was put on the books in Chester County for that stormwater management system. And that stormwater management system was created big enough to allow for all aspects of the, the pool and the deck, as well as the improvements we're, we're looking to make from, from that end. So that's pretty much an overview of, of the project.
Chairman, Chairman Winters, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am. I have myself muted by accident.
Kyle, George, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any.
Yeah, I don't as well. I'm familiar with the property. I'm actually doing a project across the street, so when this came up, I knew it exactly where you're talking about. The property is, the entire section of that neighborhood is more than adequate, obviously, for, for ground consumption of water. That being said, you know, we're, we're just the board of supervisors for this. Unfortunately, it goes to the zoning home, but I, I would like to make a recommendation that, you know, that you guys have the board's support to the, to the zoning, zoning home.
Okay. I'll second that.
Bye.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the time and being put on the agenda.
No problem. Thank you very much. Moving on to.
Chairman, I just would take the opportunity to point out that, that our code calls for zoning hearing applications to be carbon copied to the full members of the planning commission and to the full members of the board of supervisors. So if you're notified that someone is applying for zoning hearing board relief. But I would point out that the fact that an applicant attends your meetings and makes a presentation is a tradition. a presentation is a tradition, not the law. And therefore, if the board is inclined to change that tradition, it can be done. In other words, we had an applicant who is going to present before the zoning hearing board in the first week of February. And, you know, I appreciate their patience waiting in the queue here, but we spent two hours on the line waiting to talk to the board. And I just would encourage the board to consider if this is a tradition, we'd like to continue.
Yeah, me personally, I don't have a problem with it. If they want to go that route, I don't think there's any more burden to put on someone to sit in a queue or in a township meeting unless they want to do it. So that's my thought.
Chairman, can I weigh in on-
Yeah, aren't they advised? Aren't they advised that basically coming in front of us isn't going to give them an answer, that they should go right to the zoning board?
No. The way staff handles it is we immediately on receipt of a complete zoning hearing application, schedule appearance before the planning commission and the board of supervisors and advise the applicant of that.
I would actually then say, I think personally, we should remove that requirement or that practice because if they do want to show up, it is in our ordinance that they're permitted to. But I don't think we should be directing staff to, you know, put in front of the planning commission if not, the planning commission is not going to be the final say. You know, that's my opinion. George or Kyle? I think Kyle, you're, I think you and I said the same thing, so primarily.
Can I weigh in on this a little bit?
Sure.
I think it's important for the board of supervisors to be aware of the zoning hearing board application because the board of supervisors, as you all know, has the right to appear as a party before the zoning hearing board and take a position. The question of the planning commission making a recommendation is a little bit different because zoning hearing board applications require hearings and the presentation of evidence. Luke and I have had some conversations about this. This is even somewhat parallel to conditional use. Because the zoning hearing board renders a decision based on evidence presented, it's a little, it's a little difficult for an advisory body like the planning commission to make a recommendation on a legal application before evidence is actually presented at the hearing. So there's some logic in not having a planning commission review zoning hearing board applications because it's, or conditional use applications because they are legal matters. But on the other hand, since the township board of supervisors can be a party to an application, if the township were concerned, it might want to appear at the zoning hearing board and take a position. So I think there are some differences, at least worthy for the three of you to consider.
Okay. So with that said, George, do you have any comments on that? Or Kyle?
Pardon me?
Do you have anything to say from Mark?
No, I just think when somebody has, you know, an issue they want to get done, I always like to get them to the right party and get them through the process quick so they get an answer. So, you know.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Does that answer your question, Luke?
Yeah. If I can maybe use the bold, it sounds like you're recommending that we advise applicants, if they would like to address the board in advance of their zoning hearing board date, they may do so. But the staff should stop the practice of automatically scheduling applicants before the planning commission and the board of supervisors.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So now we're moving on to-
I'm sorry, there's one more item for which there's a guest, and that is Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
And I should mention also, bond counsel is present. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening again. We're here tonight with an advertised debt ordinance. It was advertised last week in the paper. It's something you discussed a month ago. This is called a parameters debt ordinance. We have bond counsel with us tonight. If you vote to enact its ordinance, betting and scatter good will be authorized to proceed to sell bonds. We think that next week looks good. We're looking at Tuesday or Wednesday next week to sell bonds and lock in interest rates. As of yesterday, the savings on the 2012 portion of the bonds was about $225,000, which is 3.9% of the refunded principal. The savings on the 2017 bonds, which were for sewer purposes, is a little over $160,000. The savings on that one is 4.4%. The gross savings overall is about $385,000, which is 4%. And in the world of municipal government, GFOA advises that any time it's over 2%, the governing body should take a look at it. So you're double the normal target. You've got a brand-new shiny rating from Moody's this week. I don't know if you've seen the report. If you haven't seen the rating report, it's glowing. I think we'd be proud of it. So you should take a look at that credit report because that's what the purchasers of the bonds will be looking at when they decide whether or not to purchase your bonds versus someone else's. If you vote to approve this ordinance, you will not have to meet again. You'll sign the papers. The important papers will be held in escrow by bond counsel until we bring you a proposal in the form of an addendum, which meets all the criteria and minimums and maximums in the ordinance. And once everyone is satisfied, that signature page will be released and the rates will be locked, hopefully this coming week. I think I'll pause there. I don't want to give you more than you need. But let's ask if bond counsel has anything that should be added before I question.
No, I think that covers it. We've prepared the parameters ordinance for the two series that are in compliance with the Pennsylvania Government Debt Act, which basically authorizes betting and scatter good to sell the bonds and for the 2012 and the 2017 bonds to ultimately be called and redeemed.
Yeah, I would comment just in case anybody's listening and missed a very important part of this, and that is we are refinancing the general obligation bond series of 2012 and the general obligation bond series of 2017 and not borrowing additional. Fair analysis of what's happening?
Yes. Again, once the bonds are sold, all the papers have to be transmitted up to Harrisburg, where they review it for about 20 days. And within a month, we would be settling by telephone. The 2012 bonds are paid off at settlement currently scheduled for March 1st. 2017 bonds can't be taken away from the bondholders until 2022. So an escrow is created with special securities, but the debt service immediately changes to the new lower debt service and the township begins to realize the savings.
Okay. George, Kyle, do you have any questions?
No.
No, it's nice savings, nice lower rates. Great.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance one of 2021, which authorizes the issuance of general obligation bond series of 2021.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I would like to extend my thanks to our bond counsel and to Mr. Wolf for holding my hand throughout a process that I have considered, as a first-time person, I consider completely mind-boggling. It was a very interesting experience and I appreciate him holding.
We bombarded Luke with questions night and day, and he sometimes was answering at 10:30 at night. So he was on the ball and he was, you know, at the ready. And I guess that's all we can hope for. I'll try and, you know, make it as easy as I can, but when you're dealing with the IRS, there's only so much you can do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to, you know, seeing if I can provide any guidance or help with respect to the buyer project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Luke, in working with them on this. It sounds like it was, you know, a long process, so good job. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're back to 7C, which is the appointment of township manager. So let's open this up for discussion about, as of right now, the board appointing him to be the township manager for the interim. Do we have any comments from George, Kyle?
Well, I guess first thing is, we can probably only make it a one-year contract because there'll be a new board at the end. So this would be a one-year contract?
Correct. And it was prepared and prepared by our label solicitors and approved back and forth with Luke that they feel acceptable and to the best rate for our citizens.
Okay. Is it effective the day Scott left or prior? What's the effective date for Luke and the increase?
It would be, the effective date is when we approve, appoint him with a, understand that, you know, he'll have that contract from basically the time that he signs it. So pretty much if we have a motion tonight, then it would be adopted to this evening tomorrow.
Okay.
Remote. I, for one, I think it's been a pleasure working with Luke over the last several years, and I look forward to watching him prosper as a township manager and that this board can help him in any way that we can in our capacity. So I say, it's been fun and a pleasure.
Yep. No, I'm all for it.
Is there any comment, any public comment? Luke?
Well, as an agenda item, the last time we solicited comment was at the beginning of the agenda. And at that time, I had, I have some folks in the queue for non-agenda items, but I have no one in the queue for agenda items.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we addressed that. Kyle, do you have any, anything you want to ask, any questions or say?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that Luke Revan be appointed as township manager of East Brandon Wine Township.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Board, for your trust in me, I look forward to serving the board and the residents of East Brandon Wine Township and helping them meet the goals they set for themselves.
Great. I look forward to helping you. Thank you. Moving on, let's, the appointment of Francis Teraske to the planning commission for the term ending December 31st, 2024. Luke?
Yes. I'm pleased to report that at its January meeting of the planning commission, the planning commission voted to make a recommendation to fill their vacant seat for a four-year term. Individual's name is Francis Teraske. His application materials are in your packet. So at this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to consider appointing Mr. Teraske for your term on the planning commission.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we appoint Francis Teraske to the planning commission for a term ending December 31st, 2024.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to move on to the retirement of Robert Smedley from the Parks and Recreation Board after his 25 years of long service.
Right. I would like to, it's actually, it's not a happy announcement. I'm unhappy to announce that Bob Smedley, who has been a volunteer on the Parks and Recreation Board for 25 years, is stepping down. I wanted to read into the minutes my appreciation for his service. And among his accomplishments is his, the annual golf outing, for which he has been an instrumental volunteer, among a great many other contributions. And I'd like to just read into the record my thanks for his service.
George, Kyle?
Well, that was a retirement, so there was nothing needed on that.
I suppose you could vote no and keep him on. Yeah, I don't suppose it's an actual agenda item. I did, I just want to make the announcement that Parks and Recreation is a committee that is described in the code. It is not an ad hoc committee. It's a standing committee. So his departure does create a vacancy.
My only question is, somebody like that, do we do like a plaque? I mean, 25 years as a volunteer, is there any practice we have or no? Send a letter? Do we send a plaque?
Up until COVID, we did do the volunteer appreciation dinner. And obviously, that would have been something that acknowledged there. That being said, I'm sure, you know, this is going to be one of those earmarked items that we'll have to come back to at the next volunteer appreciation dinner.
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right, well, thank you for that, Luke. Let's move on to the reappointment of Jay Fisher to the ordinance task force for 2021. Luke?
Yeah, this agenda item begins with the MEA culpa. I prepared the agenda for the annual organization meeting in the first week of January, and I used last year's agenda as a guide to create this year's agenda. And the obvious oversight there is that any person who was appointed mid-year 2020 would have been omitted from my proposal for appointment in 2020. And Mr. Fisher is one of those individuals who was appointed mid-year last year and was omitted from the draft agenda, the agenda that was before you in January. And so at this time, I'd like to extend my apologies for the oversight and recommend that Mr. Fisher be appointed to the ordinance task force, a seat that he had effective December 31st of last year.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Jay Fisher to the ordinance task force for the year 2021.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's move on to the scheduling of meeting of the 501(c)(3) East Brandon Wine Foundation and soliciting interest in filling two at-large seats on the same foundation's committee.
In about 2014, the board and some dedicated volunteers got IRS approval to form a nonprofit known as the East Brandon Wine Foundation. It's a 501(c)(3). The efforts of fundraising, such as the golf outing, which Mr. Smedley was instrumental in arranging, or the 5K, which other volunteers are instrumental in arranging, those funds are going to the 501(c)(3), and those gifts are tax deductible. funds are going to the 501(c)(3) and those gifts are tax deductible. The bylaws of the East Brandywine Foundation states that there are three ex officio seats and those ex officio seats happen to be the three members of the board of supervisors. There are also two other seats that need to be filled by the, 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 the members of the board to round out a board of five. I am about to ask the board to schedule a time to have a meeting of this 501(c)(3), but I want to give advance notice that there are two seats to fill. And so I didn't want to schedule this meeting and then have you show up without an idea of who to appoint. So my request tonight is twofold. When shall we meet and how shall we solicit to fill the vacancies?
George Kyle, I'm personally, I think it's, I'm going to leave that up to what township manager's discretion, how he sees fit.
I can tell you that the precedent is that usually we would gavel the conclusion of any regular session of the board of supervisors and then immediately begin a meeting of the East Brandywine Foundation. So my recommendation would be to pick either the, the work session or the regular session in February and say that this meeting will occur at the conclusion of that meeting.
Good.
I'm okay with that, Kyle. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. And as far as, you know, if you want to put it online, Luke, on our website about the vacancies, if anybody, if any members have any recommendations or anybody knows any volunteers that would like to, I think that's probably the best we can do as far as getting it out there. So, all right, let's move on to the revised job descriptions for township secretary, the township treasurer and the permits administrator, as well as new job description. Luke?
I, I'm very sorry. I've jotted down a note about how I'm to solicit using the online resources of the township to fill those vacancies. I don't recall us deciding which meeting we would use.
I believe your recommendation. Didn't you, didn't you give us the February morning session or do you want to do the March morning session? Is it one of the other? Why don't we?
Yeah, yeah. My recommendation would be the board of supervisors meeting on the, yeah, the, the, the works, the work session, February 4th.
Okay. Can we do it?
Sorry?
It had to be done in February, could be, could be done in March?
Yes.
Okay. So I think, I'm not sure if I'm going to be around in the February meeting mornings. Are you guys okay with doing the March morning session, Kyle, George?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Luke, if that's all right with you?
Happy to do it. We will, we will arrange for the meeting to be immediately following the conclusion of the March work session of the board supervisors.
Okay. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to the revised job descriptions for the township secretary, the township treasurer, permits administrator, new job description for receptionists, and the permission to advertise the same. Luke?
Yeah, I'd like to thank members of my administrative team for joining me in a, in a lengthy brainstorming session. We sat down together and we shuffled duties to try to balance out and create new positions. By way of background, historically, the township had a position known as secretary slash treasurer. That individual performed both tasks. We promoted from within to fill secretary's position within the last few months. That's Lisa Teraske. And we have hired from without to fill the, the treasurer's position, which is Lisa Velitis. This has had the net effect of creating a administrative void that we are proposing filling with a position that is a part-time receptionist. So the, the, the action item is exactly as the agenda item reads. I'm respectfully asking to adopt the four revised job descriptions and to advertise a position of part-time receptionist.
Okay. I'm personally okay.
Thanks for doing the job description. I know.
Yeah. Kyle, are you, are you okay with that?
I am.
Okay. George, are you okay with that? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Should I make a, should I make a motion to allow Luke Revan permission to advertise the job description for a receptionist?
Yes, as well as, as well as the, any other job descriptions that he deems necessary for the staff.
I didn't know that you wanted to do that one. I might be hiring three people if you, if you phrase it that way.
No, no. We're talking a receptionist. Come on.
So.
So is that motion good or not?
Yeah, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Luke. Okay, the next one, the next agenda item is the authorization of staff to purchase a John Deere compact utility tractor for $20,765.46, using state contract number, the equipment, you know, number 44000020085. It's going to be used for the trails of the Bonsville Mill Committee, help clear them. You guys want to discuss this?
Quick introduction to this. The, the purchases for a small utility tractor, there is no similar piece of equipment already owned by the township. At this time, there's a contractor, as we speak, working, removing the concrete pad from the Bonsville Mill site. That newly exposed earth will become a garden and Bonsville Mill Committee is recommending that we purchase this piece of equipment for the perpetual maintenance of that garden, not just a, a, a construction project. I would, I would say that it's a budgeted item. I'd further indicate that the price that's quoted is based on a state contract. Therefore, while it is below the bidding threshold, the mandatory advertised bidding threshold, it is over the limit for which we must receive sealed tele, or not sealed, we must solicit telephone bids. So I, I'm suggesting we use the state contract to make this purchase.
Okay. I guess I got a couple of questions. One is, the monies, are they coming out of Bonsville's budget, general budget, or open space fund?
Right. Well, it's important to distinguish that, that the Bonsville Mill as a, as a, as a project, has line items budgeted in multiple funds. The, the short answer for where this 20,000 is coming from is the capital reserve fund. Most, even more specifically, it's coming from the funds that were transferred from open space that we made, that, that, Chairman Winters made a suggestion that we, we moved that from one encumbered fund to another unencumbered fund earlier last year.
Okay, so it's coming from capital fund. Secondly, looks like it's going to be used, you know, primarily at the Bonsville Mill. Where is this piece of equipment being stored overnight?
I have, I have asked the, the Bonsville Mill Committee to make arrangements to store it in building F. Building F is the, the structure with the, the, the roofline at the far right of the, of the, of the Bonsville Mill buildings.
And it's secure.
F is open on one end at this time.
I don't know if I'd be saying that, you know, out loud.
Yeah, I know.
Why don't we, why don't we store it at the police station for a little bit? Why don't we store it at the volunteer across the driveway? Does he have a shed in the back?
Well, I appreciate that as a, as an option that would improve the safety of the equipment. I, I would caution that township-owned equipment going on the private property on and off every, you know, every volunteer workday is going to raise some eyebrows. I would submit as a, as a matter of optics, it is unwise to do that. As a matter of legality, there's no, there's no problem.
May I make a comment?
Sure. Yes.
I'm not in favor of storing a piece of equipment down at Bonsville Mill. And, and the reason being that they're having security issues down there right now. They have, they have damages down at the property. We've been working with them in regards to camera security. Until they get a better security option down there, I don't think it's a good idea to leave it out. If they have another option, I'd like them to consider that.
Well, I, I think that maybe the board should talk about this in private, just so that we're not disclosing the location if it's approved. And obviously bring the, the staff and, and police and Bonsville Mill in on the decision. But I, I just think for right now, for, for those reasons, you should be.
I agree. Do we have a motion to, for the authorization to purchase?
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to purchase a John Deere compact utility tractor for $20,765.46 under using the state contract number 4400020085.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, the server upgrade proposal from Custom Computer from Luke?
Right. A little later on, we're going to talk about exactly how small a proposal should appear before the board before I execute it. But here's another gray area one. We've been getting morning messages about the server that we have here in the township administration side rapidly filling up. And it's filling up because we record meetings like this in high definition that are several hours long. And we also, it's filling up because we have been rapidly digitizing our paper records into laser feeds. Before you is a proposal for approximately $5,000 for server upgrade. This is prepared by our new IT consultant, Custom Computer. I would say that there is money in the budget under computers and equipment to, to use this on. $5,000 seems like a bit steep for me to just green light without running it by the board. So I'd respectfully ask permission to make this purchase.
I'm fine with it.
Well, how about you, Kyle? Do you have any questions?
I'm good.
I'm as well. I'm fine with that too as well, Luke. So do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
We don't need a motion for that.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
But it does, go ahead.
Now that can move on to the next, which is establishing the spending authority for the township manager. What, what's your recommendation, Luke? What's the going?
Just in this evening alone, we've had a proposal for professional services in the amount of about $63,000. We've had a tractor purchase on a state contract for approximately $20,000 and some server equipment for about $5,000. I'm thinking somewhere in here is a line on where it's appropriate for me to get pre-authorization from the board before making a major purchase. I like to point out just a couple numbers that are of interest to the board. One of them is the, the threshold for which telephone bids are required before making a purchase. And that figure is approximately $10,000. The second threshold is the, the threshold at which one must get sealed advertised bids unless you're using a state contract. And that figure is $21,300. So my recommendation is that, that purchases that are in the budget that are less than the, the telephone bids, I should be able to purchase. So essentially, I'm saying, let's set this at five or at 10,000 at the board's discretion. It, it seems like the $5,000 server purchase might be a little below your radar, but a, a $20,000 tractor probably should be a discussion.
I'm okay with $10,000 authority.
Kyle, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm okay. As long as board has, has knowledge of what, what's going on.
Right. Well, this is in addition to the cash controls. So I've pointed out that, that, as we did earlier in this meeting, the board authorizes all payments. So the, the list of checks that goes before you to vote on, as we did earlier, just because I bought it doesn't mean that you have to sign the check to go over. It's just a question of when do you want to see me in advance of committing to something?
Well, I, again, I think it ought to be brought up to the board before a check is, is even in transmission. So just for knowledge and our sake of being ahead of it.
I will do so for purchases over $10,000.
Great. Okay. Moving on to the township staff reports to the board of supervisors. Luke, is this a change that you want to see made?
Well, not so much change, it's just clarification. I understand that the board had asked that, that Scott was making weekly reports on Friday. Scott, in turn, asked his team to provide him with reports to, to, to make sure that he was making a comprehensive report to the board weekly. I can tell you, my, my personal preference is I would like that less frequently than that. In time, I might get a handle on the administration such that I have time to, to write that. At this point, writing a, a monthly report to the board is a bit of a struggle. So I, 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 I will, I will actually go out there and make a recommendation. I, my recommendation is that I make reports at both the work and regular sessions. That will make, that my report essentially bi-weekly.
George Kyle, I think that's, you know, for, if you have a, now with a transition and everything, I mean, I'd be even okay with just suspending that for, you know, just doing it once, one of the meetings, you know, a month, just, you know, for, just until you get, you know, up and going and, and, you know, get, get some, get the important things, you know, on your, off your list.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with either bi-monthly or monthly. I mean, I initiated this when I came on the board because I wanted to get a feel for the tasks and activities, you know, Luke, of manager, assistant manager, and roadmaster. And, you know, with the roadmaster reporting to you now, I, I don't, I don't need his Friday morning reports. I was just getting a feel for what he was doing, you know, one week and what he was planning for the next week. So that, the roadmaster weekly one can stop as long as I think you get support from him. But.
Yeah, I mean, I'm even, you know, okay, just, just you providing us memos as you see fit, Luke, as you have done for the last, since I've been here, you know, anything important you forward to us or emails or you include us. So I mean, if Matt's not going to be doing his report, the chief does his at the, his, at the readings anyway, you know, really, I think to ask the staff, I think something maybe that you want to, maybe we do just put a stop to it and let you kind of develop your own, you know, protocol that you think is going to work best for you and your staff.
But Luke, you're saying, you're recommending that you give a verbal manager's report at the morning session and at the regular session, just the verbal, right?
Yeah, he does it anyway. You know, it's already on the agenda for the, for like tonight, he was on, you know, system.
So he gives, yeah, that's fine.
No, no sense doing it every once a month in our email or, I think we should just stop and get back, get, and then, we're going to have the reports anyway. I mean, are you okay with that, guys?
Yep.
Kyle?
It's fine.
Okay. Is that okay, Luke?
Yeah. Again, I don't have strong feelings. I just, I, I, it's things like this spending authority and the frequency of my reporting. I want to get off on the right foot and establish what the board's expectations of me are as, as the, the person you're entrusting with the operation of township. So I'm, it, it, it sounds like I'm preparing a written report that may or may not be yet allowed once each meeting.
Like you would do anyway, like you did tonight, that we, that we were going to prove that was tabled. So, you know, George got, George got caught up to speed. Kyle was up to speed and I've been up to speed a little bit. So I think we're fine with the, that separate little policy. So.
Yep.
Of course. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on then. We are going to be tabling and the directing staff to obtain appraisal parcel 32629. We'll table that for the February meeting, the advice of our solicitor to take a look at, into it further with natural antitrust. So that's not on the agenda anymore. We did the subdivision, zoning applications, the ordinances. Do we have any, we have to do actually, we have to do what the resolution to 2021 appointment of Lisa Teraske as a right to know officer for the township?
Correct. We, we've done this. Each time we have turnover, we, we need to appoint a right to know officer pursuant to the right to know law in Pennsylvania. So Lisa is taking on the duties of secretary and we, when we divided duties, as earlier we did this evening with, with the job descriptions, primary responsibility for responding to right to know requests will remain with the secretary. right to know requests will remain with the secretary. So at this time, I respectfully ask that you adopt resolution two of 2021.
Yeah, just one question, I'm surprised, East Brandywine Fire Company?
The latest version omits that. I had a conversation with our solicitor relative to that and yes, the language of our last appointment, which would have been of Lisa V. to serve as that resolution, said that she was the right to know officer for the municipal authority and for the fire company. Those are independent agencies.
Okay, so I guess it's been stricken in a later agenda.
Correct. We've narrowed it down to just appointing her as the right to know officer for the township.
Township. Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution two of 2021, appointing Lisa Tarashi as the right to know officer for East Brandywine Township.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment on non-agenda items, Luke?
I do have a queue, please stand by.
Is your queue Bruce Rawlings? Okay, I was gonna say he had questions.
Can you hear me now? Good evening. Luke, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, good.
Oh, good, thank you. First of all, I would like to congratulate Luke and his new position as township manager. I'm sure we all will enjoy working with him in the years to come. I know he's only on there for one year, but I'm sure he'll weasel his way into a few more years after that. My two comments tonight are, both of them were brought up the last couple of meetings is I just want to keep the giant as an update, I just want to know if there is anything new that came about and what, what we as a community need to know or don't need to know at this point. I know it's under litigation and you can't comment, but I think the township would like to know where we're at. So Jason or Kyle, can you give us any updates?
Well, yeah, Bruce, like I said, the last several meetings that we're not discussing legal during a public meeting, this is for public comment on non-agenda items, so if you, do you have a comment on the, on that particular litigation that you want to just get out at the meeting?
There's no particular, I just wanted to know where we're at and, and I think as a public, we kind of deserve to know where, where everybody is at that stage. If you feel we don't need to know, then that's your, that's your opinion.
Well, Bruce, I think that you don't have to put words in my mouth that I didn't say. I didn't say no one has a right to know. In fact, when there is something for the public to know, it will be on the agenda and it will be coming on it. As I said in previous meetings though, it's, any litigation, it's been the practice of the board and policy and regulation, we're supposed to not to comment on legal issues during public comment.
Next, next comment is the, the traffic impact committee. We are needed to set that up and get that moving forward, but as we're waiting, we have an applicant for the Plank Farm who is presenting a sketch plan and our solicitor has been talking to their lawyer in reference to allow if they put an easement through their property, they will be able to reduce their sewer capacity from 150, 150% to 120%. I think it's important to decide if we, as a township, are going to be looking forward to the East Reeseville extension or should we not consider that and move forward with the applicant for the Plank Farm without that easement put through there. I think that's important, that we need to do that. We need to have the committee brought to light again and move forward.
Thank you for your comment. I will say though that this is something I believe the board had taken a position that we're going to allow the municipal authority, which is obviously a separate entity from the township, to, to take a look at that 150% requirement and then the township board can then circle back around and decide if that's something that we need to look at our own SADO requirements and possibly amend that. I think it's too, a little bit too early for us to be commenting on that, you know, we don't speak for the municipal authority, so I think it has to go through them first and then, and then brought to, you know, in that order. So I mean, that's basically the only comment that I have on that. Is there any other comment you want to make on that or George, Kyle?
No.
Okay, I just want to keep it out there in the open.
Okay, I appreciate that and I think that that's something that the board will be found upon as well from our last meeting that is on our list, so.
Okay, thank you for the time.
Thank you Bruce. Luke, any other public comment on non-agenda?
Yes, also in your queue is Jim Buxall. Hi Jim.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start off by echoing Bruce's comments and congratulations to Luke for being appointed township manager. I've worked very closely with Luke since he was brought into the township and I view him as very capable and I'm excited to see him take the lead with the township. What I primarily want to talk about in this segment of the meeting was the parking lot at Bonneville Mill. We've approached you in the past regarding presenting a letter to the owners and the renters of the workers housing units across the street from the, from the park. We share the parking lot with them, the parking lot is part of the municipal park, it's owned by the township, but six of those eight units have nowhere else to park and so we share the lot with them. We would like to issue a letter to the owners and, and the renters there and the last draft of the letter that we presented to you was softly worded and it was really geared towards formally stating that we're sharing the lot and that we, we need to use that space as efficiently as possible, we, we need to make considerations for each other. We continue to have incidents in the parking lot where, where the owners or the renters that live there are parking in a way that limits the use of the parking lot. It's a small lot, it's, it's difficult from the standpoint that, that we have such a small amount of space there, it's very important that it be used as efficiently as possible. And when, when the people that live there are obstinate, obstinate may be too strong a word, but when they're being difficult and, and the space isn't being used efficiently, that affects the visitors to the park and, and use of the park. So I'd like the supervisors to revisit the letter. The draft should still be there at the township, I can re-forward it to you if you'd like, but I, I'd like you to consider issuing the letter, just so that there's something formal coming from the township. Again, it's not, it's not strongly worded, but it is just a formal communication indicating the need to share the lot efficiently.
I think that's something though that, you know, when it comes to the, who's going to have a shared permission and how it's going to work out is something that our solicitor's going to need to take a look at and, and get back to us. I know we have, Kristin had looked at it in the past, I believe that, you know, we had changed Christopher's transfer, it's going to have to go to Mark's firm and we'll have to look at it to figure out what the best approach is, because I know you guys are eager to get this done, but at the same time, I think the board in the past was concerned to make sure that there are townhomes that have been parking there for over 21 years and this one is true, you know, to have a valid understanding.
Oh, well, yeah, we don't argue, yeah. We don't argue their use of the lot, what we would, what we would like to do is to help them to understand that we need to work together to make efficient use of the lot. And the last letter, I believe Kristin supported it.
Yeah, I know Kristin did, but I know I didn't, just because of the wording, I wanted to make sure. I understand what you guys are trying to do, but I just think that, you know, we still have to do our due diligence, you know, they've, we don't need to get ourselves into any, any legal issues, so I think it's something that we should have our solicitor take a look at.
Okay, I agree. Could you perhaps have Mark take a look at it and maybe you and Mark make edits to the letter to something that you're comfortable with? I, I think just about any kind of letter submission to the, the people living there would be a help.
No, absolutely, I think that's, if the board is inclined, Kyle, George, if you're okay with that, I think Mark can take a look at this, we can pass along what we have for that, Jim, with the drawing, with the latest drawing that I printed for us about, I think three, three months ago or four months ago, actually probably longer.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
Yeah, if you guys are okay with that, Kyle, George, for Mark's firm to look at that, work out the quirks and then maybe get with the Bonneville Mill committee.
I, I would say that why put, why go through this again? I'd say Kristin's already made her notes, I already stated earlier, our solicitor's rates are getting out of control, why not just make your notes to, notes to the letter that was already given to our solicitor twice and give it back to the board to decide on a public meeting? There's no sense of giving it to another solicitor for a second look at something that's already had two looks.
I mean, I personally don't remember this letter that was ever written, never been presented and I thought Kristin said that she wanted to take a look at it because we didn't know how we were going to enforce this, you know.
Well, yeah, and we, and we went back and we redrafted the letter to something very soft and Kristin made the statement at the last meeting that was brought up that she was comfortable with the letter. And the decision was made not to, by the supervisors, not to send it anyway, but Kristin supported the letter, the last, the last draft.
That's because the majority of the board didn't support the language. Well, the board didn't include the language that stated that it was owned by the township and that we're allowing them to park there and, you know, it's been, it's been, they, those townhomes have been, they've been using this, that parking for over 21 years and rather than try to take that approach, you know, and have some kind of challenge for adverse possession, the jari of the board decided to get the language cleaned up and to get a little bit more cooperation with those homeowners because we did not hear from them at that point. Kyle, if you want to, you know, that's your, that's your opinion, that's your comment and you're entitled to it, that's fine. I'm just saying, my, my comment is I'm not comfortable with that letter that Kristin recommended until that language is cleaned up and, you know, Kristin's not our lawyer now, Mark is, and I think that's something that he should take a look at.
So let me rephrase this. The solicitors looked at this twice, you've had it in front of you twice, if you had changes that you wanted made, why not make the advice to the Bonneville Mill, the, the changes you want, see if they're okay with those changes in the letter and then save everybody the added expense of sending us to another law firm who's never looked at this to have them go through it? It doesn't make sense, it's absolutely crazy.
Kyle, you didn't listen. The Bonneville Mill looked at it twice. Kyle, I know, I just told you I never saw that letter, first off. Second off, Bonneville Mill Committee, I don't think there's any attorneys in there that are going to provide that legal input well as yourself, I think it would have been, that letter had been sent out months ago. All I'm saying is.
This letter at two meetings, Jason, how have you not seen this letter? We've talked about this at least three times.
Kyle, I'm sorry, I, I see a lot of letters and I just told you and it's not familiar with me, so do you have anything else you want to comment on or I'm moving on? I'm done with taking your insults.
So.
I like your comment, I'm done with your comment.
I would just like to find a path forward on, on this issue. I can, I can resend the letter to you and to Mark and you can mark it up however you want. My, my viewpoint is the letter can say just about anything at this point. I would just like something from the township to go to the owners over there emphasizing the need to use the parking lot efficiently. Whether we remove the, the, who owns the lot from, from the letter, I, I don't really care, I just, the focus of my concern is that we use the lot efficiently and we communicate that need to those owners in a, in a submission from the township, that's.
And that's your attorney's concern though, Jim, I don't think you need the board's permission to write a letter to anyone asking them to use a parking lot efficiently, I mean.
On township letterhead?
Why not? I mean, you're asking someone to, to, to be efficient with their parking.
Okay, so.
I mean, that, I'm fine with that. I'm just not okay with saying that we own, we own this and you don't and you don't have a right to be here and we do.
That, that, that last draft of the letter never said that, so.
It implied that though.
Okay. Do, do you want to see another draft of the letter before I send it?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd like to see, I've never seen a copy of the letter, I'd like to see it. Before we go the next step to a solicitor, I'd like to see what the letter says. Your intent is what with this letter? Just telling them that they got to be better at parking? What's your intent?
My, my intent is that we're using this, this parking lot together and we need to be considerate of each other and use the space efficiently. That is really my intent and, and to try to get these people to think a little bit about how they're using the lot.
I know, but then the solution is what's considerate? I mean, there's got to be something, I guess you can't do parking spaces because it's a dirt, dirt road, right, or something? We can't make parking spaces and allocate spaces, but be considerate, I just, I guess I'm wondering what kind of, what kind of reaction and what we're going to get out of the letter. I mean, the letter sounds like a good idea, but it's not proposing a solution, it sounds like, right?
Well, we, we do have plans to put parking stops in at least, so.
Okay.
The parking stops would visually provide spaces without lines even, but we, we could, we could paint lines as well, but, but we do have a plan for the organization of the lot and I think we presented that plan to the supervisors previously. I can attach that plan to the draft letter that I, I sent to, to you, Kyle and Jason.
Right. And my other question just would be, have you ever met with these people as a group to talk it through?
It's very difficult to communicate with them physically, a lot of them work night shifts or they're just not there. I've, I've knocked on the door several times to have conversations and usually I don't get a response.
Okay. That's it.
All right.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I, I want to comment on the format of, of the meeting. We, we have a, we have an item on, at the head of the, the meeting agenda for agenda items, comments on agenda items, and I'm curious whether there might be some facilitation for input from the public as each of the items are discussed. In other words, you know, ask the question, does anybody have anything to say or, or any input? I, I think that would make more sense, it's difficult to understand what some of your questions may be on an agenda item until it's actually being discussed. So I, I put that question to you, I, we don't have to resolve it, but I, I put that out for consideration. And one example tonight is Luke was talking about the zoning hearing board applications and whether they should come to the planning commission and to the board of supervisors. And my, my view is, yes, it's well understood that the zoning hearing board is the body that makes the decision on those issues, but the planning commission can give insight and, and ask useful questions that is then carried forward to the zoning hearing. those members of the zoning hearing board so that they can consider them in their evaluation of what's presented to them. Otherwise, unless the planning commission or somebody from the board of supervisors attends the hearing, the, the township's not really being represented. They're, they're, they're hearing one side of the argument or the request from the applicant and not getting input from the township. The planning commission is an opportunity for the township to provide input to, to the application. So I, I would suggest that there's value to directing the applicants to the planning commission so that the commission's input for the township can be carried forward to the zoning hearing. So that's, that's one thing I'd like to put out there. The other thing are the committee reports. I understand what Luke is doing there as far as grouping all those reports together for approval. Personally, when I was, when I attend meetings, I'd like to, I'd like to understand what each of those committees are doing. You know, what, what, what's the fire, what has, what activities has the fire company had over the last month? The police department, what is going on in the township? You know, what is the roadmaster's report? You know, those, those are things that the township is currently working on or has just experienced. And I, I think there's a value for the public to understand that. So I, I guess my question there is I don't necessarily disagree with approving all those committee reports as, as a single item, but are those committee reports available to the public so that if there's an interest, they can go and access those, perhaps the website or something like that? So those are the three things I want to discuss.
Kyle, George, do you have any comment?
No, I guess Luke, are they available to the public or not?
No, agendas are posted online, minutes are posted online, full board packets are not. I think that the likelihood that something is in a, in a staff member's report to the board that would need to be redacted is very slim. I would not however, want to have a blanket policy of board packets should be available on the website. Very frequently, there may be personnel matters or individually identifiable information that would not be subject to sunshine law.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't talking board packets. I was just talking a staff and committee. It sounded like he was interested in trying to know what's in the staff and committee report, that's all.
Yeah, there's a mechanism to do that if the board is so inclined. I'd be happy to add board reports, we just put it at the end of the agenda.
Okay. All right, we'll have to, we'll have to discuss that further then. Is there any other comment on non agenda? Thank you, Jim, for your questions.
You're very welcome, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. And you're going to, and you're going to email that over the letter?
Yeah, I'll email the letter and the parking lot plan.
All right, great. Luke, is there any other comment on non agenda?
I have none at this time.
All right, I have some then. George, you weren't with us for the last couple of meetings. I had some concerns on, well, obviously you heard some of my concerns tonight with our exorbitant amount of spending for our solicitor. My question to you would be, you know, have you, has, I'm trying to think of an easy way to put this. Have, have you been communicating with the solicitor via email for some of these tasks that he's been working on? Or is, is he just assuming to do these on his own?
I don't, I don't know what you're talking about in terms of projects or things of that nature, so.
So regarding township business, are you in, in email communication with, with the solicitor to do township business?
Um, I don't believe so, I mean.
Well, well. And I'm curious how he's getting the direction to do this.
He's our solicitor, he is directly in charge to do anything the township needs and doing the manager, the manager sometime.
Ever given solicitor carte blanche authority to do this? Who's giving the authority?
The same, in fact, when you, when you, when I was questioning what Kristin was doing, you took the same approach. The solicitor is hired by the township to, to handle the township's legal matters for the board. Whether that comes from Luke where he's got a question for something or Nate Klein, it either gets billed back to the township, gets back to the developers, it all depends. I think.
Are you guys, are you guys giving any, any input on these, on these items? I mean, are we just going with what the solicitor decides to do?
I, I still don't understand your question though, because he's, as far as what? If Scott were to contact him or Luke were to contact Mark to ask him a question legally about something that they have to do to perform their job duty for us? No, I don't think that's something that we are too involved in. I believe that's the position the board took, at least has been since day one, since I've been here. And that was one, I, I know we spoke about all the time.
In terms of the board giving the solicitor the authority to act upon things, how is this getting done right now? Are you, are you guys doing phone conversations with, with Mr. Jonas or is there email communications? That's the simple question.
Kyle, this is public comment, I'm not debating you on this right now. I don't really understand, I told you I don't understand your question. It's more direct than anything, we just gave Luke spending power. It doesn't all just come from the board.
Well, this is, it's a question and I'm supervisor, so it's an entitled question. George, my question originated with you. Are you, are you getting email communication from the solicitor right now?
No, basically not. I'm a, I basically don't feel I can ask Jonas the question. I may have asked him one or two, whatever, because I didn't understand something, so.
So my concern is, I, I've been.
Your question, Kyle, Kyle, we're not doing this right now, just get your comments out and we're going to move on.
Excuse me, in the last three weeks, I'm sorry, four weeks, I've received one email communication from our solicitor regarding township business. So how is township business getting communicated and getting, getting authorized if, if I've only been on one email with our solicitor in four weeks?
He, he, he responds to Luke's requests, he responds to the chairman's request, responds to the, by vote of the board, Kyle, like, like any solicitor has ever done for us.
I've seen.
And you got your comment out. I think that I'm, I'm ready to move on from this, this repeated.
My comment, so my.
Kyle, you're trying to continue.
And a township supervisor, how are township business getting conducted if I as a supervisor am not included in these township emails? That's all.
You don't listen, I just said that Luke can instruct Mark to do things for him. That's something that we wouldn't know as a board. We give Luke that trust, we give Luke that power, the spending authority as our township manager. You keep repeating your same for clarification, you don't understand. Kyle, every meeting, we're not doing this anymore. Put your question to George and I in an email, in email your question.
This is public comment.
Was Kyle?
So George, George, my question, George, my question is simple. Do you feel as though as a township supervisor, I'm asking you, because I've already asked Jason this question. He said he had no problem with me getting included on all township emails from October 21st, or October 17th until, till today. He didn't have a problem with it and I had asked this at the last public meeting and we agreed that that would happen. It never did happen, so now I'm asking you, because I do need the majority of the board's approval. Do you have a problem with me receiving township related documents via email with communications between supervisors and our solicitor since he took office in October, or since October 17th?
I don't think that you can answer me legally on this, Kyle.
My question was to George.
Well, I'm the chairman and I'm telling George, I don't think he even wants to answer. You keep going back to the same question, Kyle, in a different form.
So George, my question again was, do you have a problem with me getting township information via the emails that have been through our solicitor since October 17th? I had asked this numerous meetings and thus far I have not received any, so I'm asking you. I was an official, I was a publicly appointed official and I was asking to be included in those emails or at least have a paperwork trail of them so I can keep track of what's going on as an appointed official.
And what question do you?
George, go ahead.
Going back on different things, say, I don't get emails, every single email, all the ones that are pertinent, say, so.
So you don't feel as being elected official?
Kyle, are you done? We're, we're moving on, as a chairman, I'm moving on right now, you're cut off, you're, you're done.
I'm asking George a question and I'm waiting for his answer, he was in the middle of answering, George.
Being your question, you're not being clear.
Go ahead, George, sorry.
Backwards, let's go forward in terms of communication or copies, et cetera. I'm not going backwards in different things.
Okay. George, here's my concern, here's my concern. I'm an elected official, I'm an elected official, you were an appointed official, correct? So as an elected official, I was asked by the residents of East Brandywine Township to look out for their best interests. Very simple. As one of three board members, my job is to make sure that the, the coffers of the township money is being spent accordingly and to look out for the best interests of everybody resident of East Brandywine Township. What I'm saying to you is I'm not being included in the township emails that are going through, in my opinion, between the board and the solicitor. It's hard for me to do my appointed, my, my elected position when I'm not getting emailed correspondences and I'm getting one email in four weeks from our solicitor. It's hard for me to do my job. So what I'm asking is, do you have a problem with me getting caught up to speed with the ones I was not included on? First of all, and second of all, why are we not getting included? Why am I not getting included on all emails regarding township official business? That's it, very simple.
Kyle.
I'm asking George.
They copied every email, it doesn't matter. It's not even, this isn't a question for George, this is a question to our attorney. It's his email account, it's his emails, it's his privilege. This is the same, I asked this question to Kristin. Mr. Scribner, please stop talking.
So Mr. Jonas is welcome to answer the question.
I'm not asking Mr. Jonas to answer, I'm telling you that this is, this is asked and answered. I went through the same thing with Kristin. It was asked and answered, it's been governed by the, by the policy of the board since I've been here since day one. This is a dumb, this is, this question is the same form each time. It's not going to be answered. I'm telling you, do I have a motion to adjourn? I'm making a motion to adjourn now, do I have a second?
I, I think it's important to answer for this.
Aye. Thank you.